Good evening, everyone. It is 7:08 PM and I hereby call to order the February 2017 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please rise and draw your flag for the pledge allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will begin with the village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno, please.
In the office, we sold 317 trash tags for two payrolls processed. Kristen Cleveland, our deputy clerk, attended one planning board workshop. And the office will be closed on Monday, February 20th, in observance of President's Day. Should I move on to the upcoming events?
Yes, sure.
Okay. It's coming up in mid to end of March. We'll be following our next board meeting, but Tuesday, March 21st, from 12 to 9:00 PM at the Firehouse, will be our village elections. So do come out, vote early and vote often.
Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Trustees, we looked at the minutes in our workshop and Clerk Bruno, we're adding to this February 8th workshop minutes?
Yes.
So we've got January 8th public hearing minutes, January 18th public hearing minutes, January 18th regular minutes, and February 8th workshop minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes as written?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, that was Murphy then. Ezraudi, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Moving on to the treasurer's report. I think Treasurer Day. For the treasurer's report, this month, we spent, out of the general fund, forty-nine thousand, six hundred, seventy-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Out of the water fund, five thousand, five hundred, seventy-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Out of the sewer fund, three thousand, one hundred, three dollars and thirty-eight cents. For a grand total of fifty-eight thousand, three hundred, fifty-five dollars and fourteen cents. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
That was moved by Deputy Mayor and seconded by Trustee Ezraudi. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Schneider followed by Murphy. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Our zoning report this month is a little different because we have a big announcement. So back in December, Village of Tivoli withdrew from an intermunicipal agreement that we had been in with the town of Red Hook since 2009 to share building department zoning enforcement services. Tivoli removed their own in-house person around 2009 and we've been using the town of Red Hook's office ever since. I think it's fair to say, and residents will concur, that that hasn't always worked out for the village and for the interests of residents here. So we felt that strongly as well as the board and we are pleased to say that we've withdrawn and we found a new candidate. And Tivoli is going to have its own building inspector and zoning enforcement officer. And I'm very pleased and proud to announce that that's going to be Jay Trapp. Some of you may know from the Village of Red Hook. His long association with Crawford and Associates. And he is a current co-enforcement officer in some other municipalities in our area. He's, I think, going to be a wonderful addition here in Tivoli. He's got a great personality and he has a really deep resume and I think an understanding of what this village needs. We feel that, I think, we've identified there are two parts to that job. One of them is inspections and permits and helping residents and contractors with their projects to be a facilitator and help, you know, if someone wants to do X, Y, and Z at their property, help them do it in a timely, safe, legal fashion. Obviously, he will also be dealing with the planning and zoning boards when they need it. But the other piece that we have identified in Tivoli and residents will concur is there needs to be enforcement when there are code violations, both from the New York State Building Code or from our own village code. Safety, some of the very nuanced and important code that we have worked on to try and preserve what makes Tivoli, Tivoli. Projects need to conform to that or what was the point of passing that code in the first place? So he is going to have regular office hours right here, just in the office next door. Those will be Monday from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. And again, on Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So we hope that those two windows, that people find them convenient. If not, we'd like to know. We're sort of starting with that, but we're open to feedback if those are not, you know, convenient times for people to have access to their building department. Is there anything else anyone would like to add to this?
You place a bean vase.
So we welcome Jay. He couldn't be here tonight, but I told him that we were going to spill the beans and I sincerely hope, you know, this has been a big issue in the village for a number of years and I hope that residents see the results that they want and deserve. That's our goal here. So we welcome Mr. Trapp. You've had a chance, I hope, to pick up the agenda when you came in and I'd like to open it up to public comment on agenda items only. Then I think we will dive right in. First up, trustees, we see we had some budget modifications. Again, we've been doing some modifications every month as we see, you know, where costs come and where savings are. So you'll see we had some large expenditures through the engineering line, which we go over, but we are going to increase that. Those expenditures had to do with our CDBG grant for Pine Street improvements and for our grant for the Tivoli waterfront master plan of the park and shoreline stabilization. So those are monies that we will be reimbursed when we get the grant money. But at this time, we have to just pay and wait to be reimbursed. And the other four items there are pretty small. We discussed them in the workshop. So is there a motion to adopt these proposed budget modifications?
I move that the proposed budget modifications be adopted.
Thank you. And seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing a solicitation of bids for the wastewater treatment plant tank repainting project. Crawford and Associates, our project engineer, has requested that the village proceed with advertising for requests for the bid for the Village of Tivoli Water Treatment Plant Tank Repainting Project. We went over the package in the workshop and we are still waiting for a final county. That was for that one or that was Pine Street? No, that was for Pine Street. This one's ready to go. Yeah, it's the next one. So we resolved to release these bids and hopefully we'll get a lot of good offers from some good firms. And again, as we talked about last month, those tanks are long overdue for a repainting and we have been advised by the DEC that we have to get it done. So I'm pleased that it's finally at hand. Is there, obviously, so we'll do a roll call vote. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that was Schneider and then Murphy. Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Ezraudi?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Resolution is adopted. Moving on to another solicitation of bids, this one for Pine Street improvements. We talked about this, this is for a new bus lane over there on Pine Street, new bus shelter, new benches, some new trees, some drainage work. And this is all from a community development block grant that we won. And we have put in for a Phase Two. Keep our fingers crossed for that grant, but we will see. So for this, we are going to authorize the solicitation of bids, conditional on the county approval that we are still waiting for. That has to do a shipboat, right?
It's just the county having to review them for their, because it's a CPG project and checking all their boxes off.
So is there a motion to authorize the solicitation of public bids for the Pine Street Improvement Project?
I'm going to add here.
The motion was made by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by Trustee Ezraudi. We'll do a roll call vote. Deputy Mayor Major? Trustee Ezraudi?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Okay, next we have a motion approving the village board's LWRP findings related to the Tivoli Pathway Project. This is coming on the recommendation of the village planning board, who reviewed these documents at their meeting two nights ago. And I want to thank them. The power was out and it was pretty dicey, but power came on just in time for their meeting. And I want to thank the fire department for being ready to host that meeting for us if need had been there. In our workshop this evening, we reviewed the EAF Part II and III and the coastal assessment form and the draft NAGDEC. So we are on to stating our own findings.
Do you want the description of the action?
Of the action, the Tivoli Pathway Project?
Yeah. Just so we know what's going on here.
Very good. "The proposed action is the installation of a paved pathway that will connect the village center west of Woods Road to Diana Street, creating a safe walking area for pedestrians. The location where the pathway will be installed is currently used as a walkway, but has no safe pedestrian area designated. The path will be eight feet wide and will serve a multipurpose path. It will be wide enough to accommodate simple groups of pedestrians and allow them to pass without interfering with each other. The path will also be wide enough for wheelchairs and baby strollers to pass without conflict. Increasing the use of the pathway, the existing drainage structures will be replaced as part of this action." So we've talked about this for quite a while. We got a Greenway grant to design this walkway and we hope to find funds to build it, but it's going to be expensive. So that's the project. And we would like to do our local waterfront revitalization program, consistency determination, that it is consistent with the policies of our LWRP. Is there a motion to approve these LWRP findings?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was made by Trustee Schneider and seconded by Trustee Ezraudi. Any discussion? Thank you Deputy Mayor for reminding me to tell everyone what we're doing here.
And Mr. Mayor, you can sign the other three department and make sure the papers cover that.
Yes. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, number five. "Resolution to adopt a SEACER NAGDEC for the Tivoli Pathway Project." Okay, so this is a resolution to adopt a SEACER determination of nonsignificance. Is there anything else I should say about that before the moves to vote?
Well, you've just indicated that we reviewed in the workshop the Part II and III in the draft NAGDEC, which goes through each of the potential impacts and indicates that each of the small, expected small impacts would be expected to be denigrated or would be not expect to have a significant adverse impact.
Right, we've reviewed impacts on lands, plants and animals, historic and archaeological resources, transportation, noise, odor and lights.
And I think one of the insignificant things is that the project is going to be disturbing areas within the right of way that have already been disturbed. So that's a key finding in terms of the SEACER analysis.
Good. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the SEACER finding? Determination of nonsignificance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Trustee Ezraudi followed by Trustee Murphy. Roll call vote, please, Deputy Mayor Major? Trustee Ezraudi?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Okay, next, we have "Amending the Greenway Connections." We will start with a motion approving our LWRP findings. So just as the last project for the pathway, we asked the planning board to review these greenway guidelines. The village, I might have to get into that. The village already has adopted the Greenway Compact Program and Guidelines for Dutchess County communities back in 2000. But the county is updating them, so we've been asked to update ours as well.
We were one of the first to adopt those in 2000.
Great. And there was one about filling stations, which we don't permit anyway. So there are seven new guides and we're only going to do six of them. So we've reviewed our EAF and CAF and the draft NAGDEC. So is there? The planning board found that these Greenway Connections Guides are consistent with the policies of the LWRP. So is there a motion to approve our village board's LWRP findings?
Yeah, I move.
Okay, that was the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? So I can sign that. And then we have. So this resolution has both our NAGDEC and approval of the guides themselves. Is that correct?
Correct.
"Whereas the Hudson River Valley Greenway Act of 1991 has as a legislative goal the establishment of a Greenway Compact, a process for voluntary cooperation among the communities of the Hudson River region, and whereas the Village of Tivoli adopted Greenway Connections by local law and joined the Greenway Compact in October of 2000, and whereas the Greenway Act or the adoption of Greenway Connections do not supersede or change the powers that the state has granted municipal governments under the New York State Constitution, the municipal home rule law, or various municipal enabling acts, Greenway Guides are entirely optional in nature and are to be considered only when local officials in discretionary decisions think they may be appropriate. We have prepared a full environmental assessment form for the purposes of its review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act SEACER and have determined that the village board is the only involved agency. On the recommendation of our planning board, we have reviewed the six Greenway Guides and have found them to be consistent with our LWRP. And so I think it's time to ask for a motion adopting this resolution of the NAGDEC and the approval of the Guides themselves."
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call votes. Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Ezraudi?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Okay. Next, we have a couple of things related to the proposed anchorages in the Hudson River. And I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Mayor Major, who has been a spokesperson for this whole board, starting at Croton a couple of months ago and joined me at Kingston City Hall two weeks ago, where we learned even more about frankly, this threat to our region. So tell us about it, please.
Well, because what we're looking at today is joining the Hudson River Waterfront Alliance, which is a group that was put together down in Yonkers. And it's an alliance of waterfront municipalities who have teamed up with Scenic Hudson and with Riverkeeper to look at the effects of these proposed 43 berths for tankers and barges on the river. And so these new proposed anchorages would be from Yonkers up to Kingston. And so you might think, well, that doesn't really have anything to do with us. And I have a little statement that sure points out exactly what it does have to do with us. Although there are no proposed anchorages within the Tivoli reach of the Hudson, the traffic that will be encouraged and enabled by this change will have immediate and dramatic physical impacts upon our waterfront. Within yards of the channel, our shoreline is eroded by the wake of each tanker ship and barge that passes. Consistent with our local waterfront revitalization plan, the village has engaged the Department of State DEC, Dutchess County Planning and Scenic Hudson to stabilize our shoreline with the goal of creating a public park to secure our access to the water. Along with this obvious and measurable impact, we are concerned about the environmental impacts. Legitimizing the anchorages south of the Kingston-Rancliff Bridge in conjunction with future increased capacity at the Port of Albany could potentially allow an endless noisy diesel parade just off our shore. This would essentially cut off river access to those recreational voters and fishermen, diminish the quality of life of residents and visitors, and severely compromise the public's experience of this scenic area of statewide significance, which is also within the Mid-Hudson Historic Shorelines District and the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District. Most worrisome and potentially disastrous is the effect this would have on the coves and tidal marshes of the Tivoli Bay's Wildlife Management Area and the furred, feathered, and famed inhabitants therein. The Tivoli Bay's area is 1,700 acres of tidal marsh and upland forest with hiking trails, boat launches, and a bike path connecting the Village of Tivoli to Bard College. The bays are a designated New York Bird Conservation Area in recognition of its unique marsh bird community. Its importance as a staging area for migrating waterfowl and as a migratory stopover habitat for warblers. Furthermore, the area is a New York State Natural Heritage Area recognized by the Department of Environmental Conservation to call attention to and protect the rare animals, rare plants, and significant natural communities on this state-owned land. The bays are also part of the Hudson River National Estuarian Research Reserve, which provides field laboratories for estuarian research, stewardship, and education by the DEC. This unique and sensitive site is imperiled by every petroleum product bearing tanker that passes by and increasing the traffic increases the risk. We are well aware that accidents do occur, as evidenced by the running of ground of a dirt bearing barge on the rocks of Magdalen Island in April 2013. The impacts and dangers to Tivoli and other communities, especially the natural resources along the river, that would be courted by allowing more federally designated anchorages are undeniable and in our estimation, the proposal is unsupportable. So to that end, there is a pledge that we would sign on to outside of the Waterfront Alliance. And that is, shall I read that?
Sure.
Okay. So, "Hudson River is a federally designated American heritage river for which special consideration must be given to the effects of actions taken on and around or within the river on natural, historic, economic, and cultural needs of the surrounding communities. Extraordinary local, state, and federal resources have been dedicated to the revitalization of the Hudson River over the last several decades. Likewise, the communities along the shores of the Hudson River have engaged in very successful decades-long campaigns to reverse the impacts of industrialization and to return the Hudson River shoreline to the people. The Coast Guard's proposed extension of Hudson River anchorage sites will reverse the pattern of restoring economic and environmental prosperity of the river and its surrounding communities. In recognition of our mutual concern for the economic vitality, environmental health, and public safety of the Hudson River and its surrounding communities, we stand united as the Hudson River Waterfront Alliance. The HRWA commits to collaborative examination of the local and regional impacts of the proposed anchorage sites to providing information regarding the proposal to residents and stakeholders and to utilizing its collective resources to protect and preserve the interests of the Hudson River communities we serve."
So when we attended this meeting at Kingston City Hall, the mayor of Yonkers was there and a lot of communities downstate, they've already sort of taken lead on this. There are a lot of municipalities in Westchester County and they're trying to get support further up the river. Obviously, it affects us. And if anyone hasn't gone to the Scenic Hudson website and watched their video that they hired some professionals to show what this would actually look like, I recommend going to look at it. It just transforms our beautiful river into something very different. And, you know, the risks to, the contents of those barges being, you know, crude oil and even just boating, all the recreational boating on the river, to have these enormous barges sitting out there, it makes it much more difficult to sail around out there. I mean, there are a lot of concerns, not just environmental, but safety as well.
Right, and homeland security as well.
Yes.
These things are a target.
Yep. So we're proposing to do two things. The first one is actually to pass a resolution urging the United States Coast Guard to reject this proposed rule called USCG 2016-0132 in relation to the Hudson River Anchorage Grounds. So there was a huge public comment period, several thousands of comments?
Yeah, approximately 10,000 of the last count.
That they are reviewing, but it's up to the US Coast Guard to decide whether these are going to be permitted or not. So we would like to join the other communities in the Hudson River Valley who have resolved to urge them to turn this proposal down. So is there a motion to adopt this resolution urging the USCG to reject the Hudson River Anchorage Grounds?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
That was Trustee Murphy and Trustee Ezraudi. Roll call vote. Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Ezraudi?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And the next thing we propose to do related to this, and Clerk Bruno, we're adding something here. We're actually going to take the pledge tonight to join the Hudson River Waterfront Alliance. So that was not on your agenda, but we talked about it in the workshop and decided there was no reason to wait. So is there a motion for the Village of Tivoli to join the Hudson River Waterfront Alliance and adopt the pledge?
Oh, yes.
Okay, that was the Deputy Mayor Major and Trustee Ezraudi. Any further discussion? We'll be, you know, we're getting involved in this and we will keep everyone posted as to what we learn about how the project is progressing or not progressing. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
You know, I just think about all of the progress that's been made in cleaning up the Hudson River, bringing back freshwater fish, bringing back, you know, this was a river that used to produce sturgeon and cockyard. And it's going to happen again if we keep it clean. But the bottoms of those boats, what do they bring in?
The bottoms of the boats are another concern.
See, it's also the perception that this is somehow a convenient place to store.
What? Well, it diminishes.
Convenience means throwaway.
Saying that the Hudson is nothing more than a transportation corridor is sort of missing the part.
And a parking lot.
And a parking lot, yeah.
Two things that I had never considered, what we learned about at Kingston City Hall was, were, one, the anchors of the barges dragging on the bottom of the river and, you know, there've been a lot, you know, the whole PCB history and mitigation and capping and dredging. These are going to endanger a lot of that and stir up sentiments and drag things around. So that was another reason not to have them. And the other one that was very interesting was they showed a map, a topographical map, of all the view sheds, including places high up on the mountains far from the river, where you have sightlines all the way to the river. They have this wonderful map that was highlighted.
Really? Well, yeah, so it was mapped out, like, you know, if you're up at North Lake and you, you know, suddenly you would have these eight barges parked below, within the view shed. And the impacts of this would be.
It's really, when you see that map, it's not just right along the river. You know, it's really reaching out miles and miles to either side of the river, ruining some of our great views.
And Dutchess County, one of their greatest revenue sources in the county is tourism.
Tourism, right.
It's part of what has revitalized this whole area. And that river is key to that growth of tourism, so.
So many municipalities have invested so much in their water fronts.
That's included.
Well, yeah, and there's no point in us talking about a park.
And there hasn't been a clear notion of why this well has to be.
Right, well, it's banking on increased traffic.
Yeah.
With the export ban being lifted. And, you know, the argument made for these anchorages is safety. But, you know, the fact is that they can park these wherever they need to, in case of safety now. So designating more and designating them as, all but one are designated as long-term parking. So, you know.
Doesn't save it. Seems like it's worthwhile to raise the check just.
And we have done so. I skipped over another agenda item, number eight, which is a resolution supporting a product stewardship program for paint. So New York State is looking at having a product stewardship program, basically requiring manufacturers of paint to be responsible for the. manufacturers of paint to be responsible for their recycling and disposal. There are millions of gallons of leftover paint generated in New York each year, which costs tremendous amount of money for local governments to properly manage. Management of leftover paint in New York results in a cost that typically represents 50% of municipal household hazardous waste budgets.
Wow.
A statewide paint stewardship program would mean that the paint industry would be responsible for collecting and managing leftover paint in New York. The District of Columbia, eight other states, including Rhode Island, Connecticut, Vermont, Maine, have passed legislation implementing paint recovery programs, saving local municipalities $69 million while successfully recycling 17 million gallons of paint since 2010. So, we would like to urge the New York State Legislature to enact a paint stewardship program in New York State. Is there a motion to resolve? So.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Trustee Ezri, followed by Deputy Mayor and...
Trustee Schneider.
Excuse me, Trustee Schneider. Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Ezri?
Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
We're almost through, we've got one more. The last agenda item is a resolution to participate in the Energize New York Program. Does anyone want to talk about Energize New York? Or shall I try? I seem to be starting to stumble. The village of Tibbly wishes to participate in Energize New York Program, currently being piloted in northern Westchester County, in order to extend the benefits of this residential energy efficiency program to residents throughout the village. The Energize Program requires local community participation in order to maximize the outreach and driving demand for energy upgrades of homes. The Energize Program makes a robust toolkit of resources, including technical assistance, print, and online materials available to municipalities that agree to undertake the Energize Program. So, this has to do, you can get your home audited, all sorts of resources to try and make the whole state more efficient through this program. You'll hear a lot more about it.
Nice duality here. If we use less energy, we have store less oil, right?
Yes, that's correct. So, as this campaign gets going, you know, the village of Tibbly will be a participant. I'm sure we're gonna get some literature up here. We may have a link on our website, and we will be letting you know how you can take advantage of this program, but for now, we need to sign on. So, this also was brought to the Village Board of Trustees through our Green Committee, and I want to thank the members of the Green Committee and Chairperson Mara Randville. They're gonna be our community sponsors and Energize Champion, with the understanding that they will serve as the main points of contact between the Energize New York staff and the village of Tibbly and its residents and civic associations and groups interested in promoting residential energy efficiency. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to participate in Energize New York?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Trustee Murphy, followed by Trustee Ezri. Roll call vote, please. Deputy Mayor Major? Trustee Ezri?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
And Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Okay, thank you. So, the next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, March 15, 2017, at 7:00 PM, preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM here at the Historic Lots to Peister Hall, and we will have a regular workshop on March 8, 2017, at 7:00 PM. And if anyone cares to note, it's sort of curious because the meeting dates fall on the same dates of the month, this month and next month, 8th, 15th.
28th.
Spooky.
Spooky, yes. Moving on to committee reports, please, Trustee Ezri.
Okay, well, I'm going to lead off with an opportunity to eat well on the Friday, January 25th, or February 25th, excuse me, at Elmendorf. It's our chili cook-off, and for 10 bucks, you get two bowls of chili and a salad and bread and maybe even some dessert from my king if we're talking into it. So, come, it's a lot of fun, and Grass Fed will be playing, so, we'll be good as well. Now, I'd like to give the well report, and we only had them at night, the Potts East and the Woodmark Wells pumping this month. McKnight at about 9,300 gallons per day, and the two Potts East Wells pumping at about 16, so everything was pumping a little lower except the Woodmark, which was up to 26,000 a day, for a total of about between 50 and 60,000 gallons per day, keeping the water tower at 167 feet, which the fire department always likes, and, oh, we have to have our shot. Okay, anybody want to guess?
Ooh, ooh, ooh.
What do we guess?
How many inches of rain?
Yeah. 2.8. I, it doesn't, it doesn't look like we've got Rs and Ss, so those are just little traces in the month of January.
It's okay.
So.
All right, any?
And I don't think there were any water main breaks.
Is there anything on the bottom? Everybody have one? Look on the back sheet, behind the samples stuff? No? Oh, yes, there's some stuff there.
Two of them? Oh.
Yeah, read it. Because we definitely had a breakdown by the plant, or we'll see the road is torn there.
Okay.
Could you just read the text at the bottom there?
It says, "Received iron sample results from 60 Montgomery Street," and then "Fire hydrant, replaced fire hydrant that was hit by a car in Pearl,"
Yep.
"and flushed Montgomery Street, water main break at the end of Montgomery Street on the 19th."
Yeah. Busy month for the DBW with that water main break and the new hydrant, but they also moved, they also...
They are.
They got it.
It's gotta...
They also...
It's gotta be.
They put the new one in about two, two feet further away from the shoulders.
Okay.
Yeah, they took the time to do it.
Slight reposition.
They wrapped it. Unfortunately, it just got regained as well. It's part of a...
Okay, and I've been checking about this for a couple of months, but we do have a date, May, for March 8, if anybody wants to come to the village workshop. We're going to have RBC Wealth Management come and talk to us about a change in the investment policy that we anticipate doing. This is a review that we need to do regularly to make sure that we're positioned correctly for the number of firefighters in the program and the length of time they've been in it. We now have $135,000 in the fund, and that's before we even put in this year's funds, so it's building up. We didn't have one fireman reach 65 this year. Ralph.
Ralph and Wayne Hillbrad.
Yeah, yeah, so we had some payouts, and they're getting up there to being real money, right?
Yeah. I keep asking for my 10%, but nobody wants to give me that.
So, that's part of a program that we established in 2007. There was a referendum that, that all of the residents of the town of Red Hook had an opportunity to approve, providing this service award to our volunteer firefighters who do not get remuneration for what they do for us. So, it's an opportunity, and it's tax-exempt, and then it becomes a lump sum that is delivered to the, as a donor would be. And they reached 65.
Yeah, 65, they pay tax on that. You gotta pay tax, that'll give you nothing. It's New York State, you don't get nothing for nothing.
So, March 8 will be all about the length of service program.
Right, yep.
Great. Trustee Schneider?
The Tibbly Village Court Charge Volume Summary Report for January 1 through January 31, 2017. Charges received totaled 1, charges disposed totaled 9. Total of $912.53 was collected and remitted to the State Control. I think it was really interesting to note here, going through the violations that are reflected here, our trusty little speed sign as you are coming into the village of Tibbly, we're really starting to see some of the effects there. I have, there are no speeding violations listed here, so it's really interesting to note that. Even if it's a grumbling acknowledgement, it is definitely having an impact on the charges that are coming through the Justice Court.
Let's see, do we have the summary report? You did that?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Murphy, please.
I don't have anything for you.
Okay.
It's time, so.
We're gonna maybe have something about the rec program next month, right?
Yes, we're working on it.
Yeah, you got it. It's not that you haven't been working, but it's just not ready for sharing.
The report, yeah.
Thank you, and Deputy Mayor Major, please.
Well, first, I should apologize for having cursed Trustee Ezri for scooping me on chili night.
See, now, this is where you retaliate by scooping her on chili night. It's getting a little...
So, also going on at Historic Red Hook on Saturday, March 4, this program from 5:30 to 7:30, which I think is gonna be fascinating, it's called Reawakening Montgomery Place, and it's, it's being put on by the Red Hook Education Foundation and Historic Red Hook, and it's an evening of community and history where Bard Professor Myra Armstead is doing a presentation called "A Prism of Antebellum Northern Society at Montgomery Place, 1804 to 1824," and there's gonna be, you know, soup and homemade bread and dinner and conversation. I think it'd be very cool. Donations are welcome, and they go to the Red Hook Education Foundation Student in Need Fund. The library has a bunch of cool things going on. There's a landscape oil painting class that's gonna be happening on five consecutive Wednesdays beginning February 22. Their space is limited, and there is a fee of $75, and you need to register in advance. Dungeons and Dragons is, there's a Dungeons and Dragons event on Friday afternoons at 4:00, and you should speak to Patrick the Clerk for details, or call the library, 757-3771. Storytime with Miss Penny Tuesdays at 10:30 continues, as does the Hooks and Needles, Irons and Threads on Thursdays from 10 to 2. And beginning in March, there's going to be a Lego Lounge for all ages, Thursdays at 4:00. And Friday, March 10, 5:30, there's an Irish dance workshop and demonstration. And that's it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Let's see, last week, I went to a Northern Dutchess Alliance Breakfast at Beekman Arms. It's their annual meeting, and they give out their citizen awards, and I want to congratulate the winners. I was invited to speak on a panel of myself, the mayor of Village of Rhinebeck, and supervisors of Hyde Park, Red Hook, and Rhinebeck, and it was really a nice event. We had all, the Northern Dutchess Alliance had done interviews of various municipalities to find out what are your challenges, what are you working on, and trying to see if there were sort of common things between the municipalities of Northern Dutchess County, and of course, they found them, and so the panel was about that, and similar things, you know, tight fiscal climate, certainly top, desire to address infrastructure, old infrastructure, very high, and also an understanding of the sort of unique portfolio of this part of the world that makes it so special, and the desire to sort of promote that and preserve that. And promoting that, we were also given at that event these great new brochures for a driving tour, and Tibbly is prominently featured here. These are, you can pick some up here at Village Hall. I'm sure you'll see them elsewhere around the northern part of the county. This was put together by Dutchess Tourism, and as soon as you open up, first map, first village is us. It's really quite beautiful. They speak of some of our businesses here, Murray's, Panzoor, The Corner, Tibbly Bread and Baking, Tibbly General, Drach Haven, Potts Farmstead, the Old Red Church, and Clermont Historic Site. So, there are a number of driving tours, and it might be fun to go on these as a local and see if there's anything we've missed. The Brazilians don't go to the Eiffel Tower here, so, but this is a really great thing, and I'm so pleased that there are people helping us. You know, Tibbly certainly couldn't produce this, but this is just the kind of thing that we need help with, and so I'm really grateful to the Northern Dutchess Alliance and what they're working on, and the opportunity to come participate on that panel was a really good experience and nice to know that, like, we're not alone, and that the other municipalities are dealing with the same stuff, so, I learned things there. Also, we've had snow. We have some rules about snow. One of those rules is don't park your car between 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM. You make it very difficult for us to plow the roads. You can be towed, ticketed. If this is a problem, if you don't have off-street parking, we sell permits for $25 here, which let you park in any of four municipal lots overnight, so you won't get ticketed, you won't get towed, and you can keep the roads clear so that our guys can do what they need to do out there. Another rule is every property owner is responsible for the sidewalk in front of their house. Please help us and shovel those blocks. The clerk and I have called many, many individuals this week, reminding them, sometimes it only looks like two inches, you think, oh, it might melt, but then it doesn't melt, it freezes. Then you get four more inches. It just has to happen, and I would rather ask everyone to comply than turn to enforcement. But we can have those shoveled and bill you for it. Our guys have other things to do, and I'd rather not go that way, so please cooperate, help us, and, you know, maybe you come out of your house and you just go left, so you only shovel that side, but it's about all of us together. You gotta shovel to the right as well, because people are walking this way. I've seen that out there in the streets, so, please, folks, when there's snow, we, you know, the village needs to do better, and if you see some snow that's not cleared, you can call the clerk's office and myself, and we will, we will address it promptly, as we saw today. Some sidewalks get cleared, they had nothing.
We want to thank Dave Cleveland, because he always is up there.
He's an exemplar on this topic, absolutely, and we appreciate it.
My neighbors don't seem to participate.
We will talk to them. And the last thing, another, I guess, scolding of sorts, maybe information for other folks. In the last two weekends, we have had four noise tickets written and one nuisance gathering ticket written. I guess the bad news is there are still some individuals residing in this village who have not figured out that they have to be mindful of their neighbors, and, you know, if you're gonna gather and revel and socialize, you have to do it in a way that doesn't violate our noise ordinance. And I guess the good news is, we've had the police out there, these tickets are being written, and I hope that it will not go on much longer. So, you know, this has been an ongoing thing in this village for many years. In the last two years, we really took it head-on. We've seen a tremendous improvement, but there are always gonna be some flare-ups, and there's always gonna be some people who haven't heard the word yet, so we are, we are not gonna slacken our vigilance on these issues, because over time, I feel very strongly we will put that new standard in place, and so, sad that we've had to do a few, but we will do it, because I think that that's what it's gonna take to really address, address the late-night noise, so. And if you are disturbed, the number is 486-3800 for the Dutchess County Sheriff's deputies, and I want to thank them for addressing these issues and getting those tickets written, so. With that, we would like to open the floor to public comment, please. With that, we would like to open the floor to public comment, please. Mr. Christie.
I just wanna touch on some fire department stuff, 'cause I haven't been here for the last couple of meetings.
We missed you.
Sorry, I've been, I haven't missed myself. Bear with me, just for your information, last year, we had a total calls, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine calls that we responded to for the entire village that's rescued and fired to the LoSAP program this year. Twenty-one people have made it, thirty people haven't. Those, out of those thirty, a lot of them are students and stuff like that, so it's hard for them to get the point, like, they're not around. That's, that's been turned in today to Rob and David with the thing where you guys gotta go back and forth with it.
Oh, good.
And then, speaking of the, talking about shoveling pathways and stuff, last night, firefighters were out shoveling out fire hydrants. It is the homeowner's responsibility to make sure that those fire hydrants are cleared so we can get to them and attach hoses. If we can't get to them, yeah, it makes it real difficult to fight the fire.
Yeah, thank you.
So, that is one thing that you need to make sure it's cleared. It's not really our responsibility, it's the homeowner's.
Absolutely.
And then finally, our breakfast is coming up, March fifth.
Ah, we get the good stuff.
Yeah, we get the good stuff. It'll be Sunday, March fifth, from eight to noon. It's at the firehouse. The, it's gonna have pancakes, French toast, eggs, sausages, bacon, home fries, hash browns, coffee, tea, juice. Adults are eight dollars, children, twelve, five to twelve, five bucks, and under five are free. So, come out and support us. Our season kicks off with that. And then usually, all the money that we, we raise from the different events that we put on, we either sponsor baseball teams or we do all different kinds of things. Donate to the food bank and everything else. That helps us do that, we turn it back to the community. So, everybody's participation is greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Other than that, that's it.
Appreciate the update.
You know, I just wanna give a reflection on this meeting. All of those roll call votes, maybe it seemed a little slow and perhaps not as exciting as some, but the vision that is being realized through the pathway to the waterfront, the improvement in the bus stop and that park, all of those things are pretty exciting. I'd like to keep them in mind.
I appreciate that, Trustee Ezra. Actually, after the last couple of days of trying to get this all together, including power outage on Monday, internet down today, and, you know, it's a lot of details. But it's good to be reminded of why we're doing all this paperwork and all these clerical obligations. It's so that we can, you know, keep working towards that vision particularly. Other comments from the floor? Any other discussion from the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll thank everyone for being here. It is eight oh one, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm gonna adjourn, thanks, folks.